Back to my no gavel days. Let me call to order the Monday, January sixth, two thousand twenty Planning Commission. Take a roll call vote.
Ms. Weiss?
Roll call attendance.
Ms. Weiss. Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Steves?
Here.
Mr. Rizika?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Krasner? Mr. Puentes?
Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda? Just second. All those in favor? Hi, hi, hi. Okay, we have no speaker, oh, receipt of petitions for items not on the agenda.
We have not, although if you are here to make some thoughts, we'll take over the work session.
Alright, no speakers this evening. And so the very first action item is the election of officers. So, we are first going to hold a vote for the Chair. And I would like to start that off, I would like to make a nomination of Andy Rankin for our chair. Twenty twenty. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing done, then I want to close the nomination process. Roll call vote on the Chair.
Roll call, so we go down, Mr. Rizika?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Steves?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss? Mr. Krasner? Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Alright, it's unanimous. Now, do I hold the vote for Vice Chair or is Andy just push me aside?
Push me aside.
I am no longer the Chair. Congratulations. Alright, I'll, I'll hold the vote for the Vice Chair and then you can take one. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Mr. Krasner.
Any other nominations? Alright, hearing done, close the nomination process.
Mr. Puentes? Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss? Ms. Steves?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin? Mr. Rizika?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Krasner.
Thank you.
I will now. Out of this Chair. Okay.
Well, what's interesting is that there is a vote.
Okay, that was item six A. On to six B, review rules of procedure. I know we did this last year and we made lots of changes. So, I know we have some of the one hundred twenty person. But did you think that our changes needed more changes or I don't really wanna talk about this?
I didn't find anything we needed more changes, but we did a lot last year.
Actually, we didn't make a lot of substitutions.
Substantive changes. Cleaned it up, made a few actual changes.
Yeah, last year, Mr. Stevens, myself and the staff spent a lot of time on it, so very updated documents, so I had no objection.
Oh, wait, no, that's great, alright, so do we have to do anything?
I don't think so, but I did wonder, I thought it was interesting that this was in it before as well, that the Mayor and the Chair of the Planning Commission should meet occasionally. I don't, did that happen when you were Chair? Cause it didn't ever happen when I was Chair. I met with staff a lot.
It's, it's sort of yes, in the sense that during this, like, last two years, we had all these sort of committee meetings. So, him and I met, like, informally on a pretty frequent basis, but it was not a set aside, you know, certain time.
I see him when he walks by the bus stop.
I know, well, I just thought that was actually a really good thing, but colleagues should try to make sure that happens. Because it would also, maybe that's a way we could make sure things like Greenway Downs actually gets done.
Yeah.
That we would personally request, we've got this done, it's ready to go, it'd be good, let's do this. Anyway, that's the only thing I would mention that I'm aware of.
The only thing I would ask, on the meeting minutes, we've changed the way we're doing it, are we following our rule? I like the way we're doing it, but are we following our rules for, uh, procedures since that has undergone a big change? Check, so. Uh, five sixty-five. This is executive four, so that's. Yeah, that's a bit.
No, it looks consistent, I just, it's the one thing that I haven't changed as much.
related to that, I did, I went back to watch on meeting that there's a recording error and it didn't start talking out. And it made me wonder how often we have recording errors. Okay. Yeah, and I assume now here it's more like Steve was, we're in a different spot. Great, that's some fun watching.
So, if we're done with discussion, I can move on to the next one. Okay, I move that the Planning Commission continue operating under the existing rules of procedure.
One second.
Like, uh, roll call vote, I guess. Alright, all those in, this is good, all those in favor?
Hi.
Repose, none, motion passes. Continue with our rules of procedure. And now we, speaking of minutes, we have the December sixteen minutes to approve. I looked at them, they looked fantastic. Two people abstained, so unless they watched the video, I wouldn't have any thoughts. I don't have any changes or minutes. Good.
Yep.
Are we really good? I got a motion to approve those minutes, right now, please.
So, moving.
Alright, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Reposed, alright, abstaining, abstaining. Alright. On to number seven, information items, any Planning Commissioner reports nowadays?
Tim, nothing? Went to Wash Night?
How was it? I was out of town.
Good weather, it was amazing weather.
Yeah, Wash Night was great, cause it was warm.
Yeah.
Warmish, it was, yeah.
Very crowded.
Yeah, there were a lot of people.
A success.
Gordon had to blow up like four hundred balloons to the point where his fingers were sore.
They were awesome, so thank Gordon.
I will.
My kids loved it.
I, I unfortunately couldn't help him.
Alright, do we have anything of interest in the correspondence category? It's all that, you're all invited to the training that they put on, right? Land use education program.
Plus, there was another one. Another course that we can take, right?
Now, for this, toward ex zoning appeals, whatever. Creative zoning projects. I don't have any.
In addition to the sort of my, my, I think it's a second session. Arizona.
Well, I think that maybe it's the same, there's a, the ninety-ninth program in Arizona, and there's also the one hundred, I think that's the same program, there's two occasions between.
There are also a few other courses to be offered. Screen now, certified.
Creative zoning approaches, that's a good idea.
Of course, that would all be eligible for, uh, re- first.
Type of one base code, so.
Uh, it could be a lot of different things, they, um, I haven't looked into the program, but there are a lot of different tools.
Alright, if anyone wants to do one of these, they just sort of, do you guys?
Yeah, for the rules of procedure, every Planning Commissioner is expected to, to go through the program of these points, I think we were talking about, uh, here. Last year, that there are department plans available, not only for this training, but for the National Research Board, to other conferences as well. I know Christian Steves, you know, to come through, there's like, uh, Virginia APA, uh, Virginia, like, Association of Technologists, and other conferences every year. Uh, and other state conferences as well, uh, Pennsylvania, excellent, already, there's, um, so you don't have to go far, you get to a, um, to a P, you know, in particular, maybe a three tweet. Um, so a little late for registration, which can always be, uh, uh, Transportation Research Board, for anyone who has, it's a wonderful thing. Conference opportunities, uh, range of programs, uh, they'll teach you everything from biking in buses to April, so it is quite comprehensive, takes over three hotels, uh, you never knew who you'll meet, it's a little bit.
Alright. And then director's one, yeah?
Uh, we had this as an informational, uh, item, uh, for anyone interested in attending this year. Uh, other things that are not included in the report, but have popped up since package posting. Uh, the date for the council meeting, uh, has been selected. Uh, it's going to be, it's like Saturday, January twenty-fifth, uh, I'm not sure of when yet, but I assume, uh, which may be dangerous, uh, that of course, uh, sports operations, bike assistance, that's not a question. Uh, the other thing is, uh, notes should be included shortly before the talk, is about the bike management support, so that doesn't compete. Uh, the deadline for that is fixed, it's non-subway approach, so, uh, we're, we're, we're just. That's it? Uh, that is everything, uh, just to give the Commission, I suppose I could give the Commission a heads up about upcoming items, it is, uh, it could be a busy couple of Planning Commission meetings, and a couple of the backside of the printed agenda. Uh, we have a speaker series, uh, next Tuesday, uh, Monday is a holiday, we recognize the, uh, Lion with King. Uh, so, uh, the second January meeting will be on Tuesday, uh, Gabrielle, Leslie, and Clark, uh, will, from, uh, Land Design will be here. Uh, and for those who don't know, Land Design is the landscape architect that worked on the, the, the project, uh, and designed, uh, Tremendous Streetscape, and also Washington Street. Uh, they do sort of work not only in the city, they're close to, not only the. Uh, Planning Commission will be expected to take, and actually be asked to take an action, uh, formalizing the work plan, uh, as well as the annual report. Uh, and then it'll also kick off the, uh, series of meetings around C A P. Uh, there's a night on the year, uh, work session, that's a, that's a, that's a, uh, the two residential subdivisions, which is planning, which is, uh, four, two twelve, is Jefferson, uh, maybe ready for action, just to be on hand, scheduled. Uh, assuming they are. And then in February, uh, it'll be Planning Commission's final action on the Natural Resources chapter, uh, session on C A P, and then also housing, uh, for the Planning Commission. There was a requirement for this other work, which is about.
Cause that was like a one-year pilot or something, or a three-year pilot?
Three years.
Sorry, yeah, it's already been three years, and the motion was that, um, so the pilot program, it limited the number of applications we could receive and review within a given year. And then it also, at three years, we would come back to council with the recommendation, well, the report and analysis on applications received, projects, um, completed. And then also a recommendation on whether to continue, amend, or repeal the ordinance.
Did we ever get more than one application?
No, there was a couple sites also interested, but they were outside of that five hundred foot limit.
Alright, well, I unfortunately am not gonna be here on the twenty-first, so. Not able to take actual step right now. Okay, I'll be, I'll be out of, out of town for work.
Uh, there are some, uh, upcoming items that are not yet scheduled, uh, George Mason High School site plan, uh, the application that's been received, staff comes, uh, by, uh, anyone's has these responses to those comments, we're hoping to respond to that. Uh, private projects coming through, still waiting on an application for, in the yard, for Counters Road, East Palm Assad, Broad in Washington, uh, an application has been received, it's, uh, staff, it's happening, so. Yeah, again, uh, waiting for response to that, uh, and then also one thirty east Fairfax is, uh, site plan. There's a surface parking lot at the corner of Douglas and Fairfax, it's, uh, it's in between, uh, Falls Church, uh, Shop was in the form, which is still works, and the, uh, back. So that'll come before the, uh, the, the session.
Alright, I think that's it for our meeting items, we just have work session. Should I use the work session, is that correct?
Uh, correct.
Way ahead of schedule, even. Doing well. Alright, how does this work, the annual advance brings to a work plan?
I think, uh, what staff had, uh, expected is that we would probably run with a, a similar format to what we had in past years. Uh, and that would be to ask each of the Commissioners to, to take some post-it notes, uh, write down, maybe some time through ideas, uh, to take on, uh, in the coming calendar year, and actually instead of the next year. Uh, rise from status, move this. And then, uh, have a discussion amongst the group as we, uh, review each person's post-it events, and then by the time we get to the office or as a whole, and all the tackle. Uh, and, and from that develop a work plan, so we had to, we have ideas tonight, uh, staff would take those back and bring to you your next meeting's suggested timeline, uh, and milestones to move, milestones, uh, the priorities decided by the group, and then staff. Uh, something new in this year's report, uh, that we did not have, uh, last year, that was actually prompted by the discussion last week. Uh, there was a question put to staff last year, and it promised, like, we'd put it, uh, the question was, will the staff think of playing this issue? Uh, and so this time we came up here, and, and that's what we laid out in lines thirty-six through line. Uh, and this is not intended to be, um, a complete or an exhaustive list, um, but they are things that carry on the work that was in the, uh, previously, and it builds on some of those.
Cause I didn't, I didn't think the checklist, but with the comprehensive plan, out of all the chapters, so are these, where are we now with the ones that have been redone? Like, are we down to like two or three chapters? Cause we've had a lot come through, but.
It's about ten chapters. Uh, they're about ten chapters.
Ten, yeah, I know that.
Uh, so, uh, chapters still not completed, uh, public utilities, urban design, uh, character and design, sorry, uh, land use and economic development, uh, historic preservation.
Okay, cause I was just wondering, you guys had pointed out the natural resources chapter, which was in process.
Just gonna wrap up.
But it really sounds to me like, like, that's why I was trying to remember which ones weren't done, because I feel like we have, we really do have an urban design issue and a land use issue going on that is. There's two that probably we should be tackling in terms of some of the issues we're seeing. So, I just, what, where are we looking at pulling them into the schedule?
The, uh, so one thing that's, um, uh, the, the, what's motivating the facilities, the utilities chapter in this case, is that, uh, the demographics chapter was just updated, it gives population projections through the twenty forty, and so that provides a pretty good sense of what's being completed. So, we're passing for the city, uh, this is also a conversation, uh, to lay out what's expected in terms of undergrounding utilities as we go.
Does it include storm water management?
Would also include storm water management, so it'd be an opportunity to look at, are, uh, are environmental conditions expected to change? I think the answer is yes, uh, and I don't know that the city has a quick handle on how it's really going to change in the next twenty, thirty, forty years, so is the storm water management plan is being updated, and are we thinking about storms for useful life and the infrastructure?
So, that makes sense, that the demographics being done and the committee work going on, that when that is done, it's a good time to pull that one up. But I really wonder if we shouldn't throw urban design in. I, I, I think that we're continuing to see a lot of chopped up design coming to us, like, we have this set design for Broad Street, we have the north, um, this was out of Washington, but we continue to change them based on projects a lot, and I wonder if it, I just wonder if we should have another conference, but that's something that's really important right now. I mean, I don't know, don't you feel like from project to project, we're seeing like little changes here and there, it's not really calling the street gate completely in all of them?
Would that include, uh, you know, taking another look at sidewalks, where we put sidewalks?
I think so too, because, I mean, I mean, urban design, part of urban design is redesigning our space to make more sense to our future use, which is more urban and less suburban. I mean, we, you know, we're on that, a lot of people are angry about it, but we are, like, you still talk to people about sidewalks where they don't want sidewalks in their neighborhood, but it doesn't really make any sense. Um, because we're talking about future use, and they personally aren't gonna walk somewhere, but if you talk to people, like, I have teenagers, if you talk to them, they plan to walk lots of places. They want to, my daughter, we live, um, on, off of Roosevelt, on Ridge Place, across from, um, at Wood Cemetery. My daughter walks to Target on fifty, which I would never have thought to walk there, cause it's kind of a crazy walk, but she, she and her friends do it, cause they would, they, they wanna walk there. You know, and it, it's a weird little thing they have to do, but anyway, but they make it. Well, I'm just saying, we, we haven't picked up that chapter, and I just think that it would be really good to start that, review that, redo that chapter, because we really need to look at all these pieces better. I just feel like we're constantly looking at little pieces that are off or wrong, or, and it might be, I just feel like our work might be easier on a lot of these projects if we had a, a comprehensive view of it. And, and also, like, it's, it is like, we, you know, we've looked at the street gate before, um, and we've looked at sidewalks, we've looked at lamps and things, is that chapter aligned with all that work that we did as well? I don't think so, so.
How many chapters do we, are we able to get through in a year?
Uh, this was recent stretch was, was, was quite a lag, it involved multiple departments, uh, pulling together to get this done, uh, I think we've been recently expected to, to, you can have two in process with one completed.
So, right now, we basically, right now, we have wrapped up? Or we're starting a new one?
Uh, natural resources slash environment will be getting a scheduled conference, I suppose, in February, and then, uh, staff's expectation is to launch, uh, public utilities in the next couple of months. We're looking at that just preliminarily for public utilities, uh, I think staff has, is, right, uh, wrapping up maybe six months versus some of the others.
So, we could probably start another one this year as well?
Yes.
And that's what I'm saying, I'd like to see urban, I think urban design should be on there.
Right, well, cause the options, the ones that we have done recently are, cause I have it up, I have it pulled up here. Uh, urban design, what is it called, it's called. Just the urban design.
Character and development.
Community character appearance and design, this make me wonder which ones we've actually done, cause I'm like, okay, we've done that one. Have we not done land use and economic development? At least since we've done some of these other ones.
No, so I think, uh, at one point the thought was get all the smaller plans done, but it's just a matter of going back in the comprehensive plan, updating.
Maybe that's one of those, maybe it's almost smaller.
Yeah, so I think, yeah.
And then, we did natural resources, we're having that one up, parks open space and recreation, transportation, we just did that one, community facilities, building those, that's one you wanna do, historic preservation. And then housing incomplete community, is that?
That was just.
That's the, that's the.
Yeah.
Does that make any?
Many is now housing.
Oh, yes, then, okay. Yeah, so I think of those, I mean, I, I, I think land use and economic development is important, but I do think there is sort of just gonna be accomplished on the smaller plans, um. And historic preservation's always fun, but it is interesting, so I think probably, uh, community character appearance and design is, uh, the final list.
Yeah, I was just wondering, cause with the utilities one, they're kind of on hold a little bit, till the storm water plays out a little bit more with that committee, aren't you? Because we have to kind of see what they come out with there. So, could we possibly learn, launch community character while we're waiting for that to play out, or do you think you could start on before that, community?
I think a lot of it is goals, so.
Okay.
Other things would be, things like books at, uh, facility, so, um, this is, it's not even.
Okay.
Is there a new person? So, uh, it's, especially for public utilities, what we're thinking about is more to split, uh, which, where it's a matter of, uh, sort of what are our best practices, uh, in this area now, and then much recently, those important, uh, these, these strategies.
And then some of that stuff you're pulling directly from the schools' data that they put together, that they think is gonna happen.
Uh, oh, I see what you're saying, does this, yes, I see what you're saying, does this, um, does this respond to, since the comprehensive plan is laying out these action items, is this proposed list actually carrying out these actions? Uh, in many cases, yes, um, certainly, I don't know, I understand, it's, uh, it's been a, sort of priority area, um, uh, it's a call out, we need a, you know, specific, uh, accounts, uh, we know it's called out in accounts, I mean, uh, so, it's something about, uh, getting the natural resources done, of course, the comprehensive, so. Uh, community facilities and utilities, I would say is an extra, uh, graphics chapter, in terms of, uh, 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 increases, uh, current planning, development. Uh, and the development regulations, I would say is the, there's the, uh, fast tied back to some of these, the Greenway Downs zoning regulations ties back to the housing chapter, uh, to, uh, trying to promote, uh, housing affordability, reduce the rate of, uh, to the city. Uh, same thing with, we add, is there another way to handle this, the, uh, for anyone who hasn't followed this, uh, there were, uh, there were, there were bills, uh, filed to, uh, eliminate significant zoning appeal. Uh.
Who's that?
Uh, so this would be, uh, the state preempting, uh, yeah, the, the state would preempt, uh, pro-hibbit, uh, stage of, 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 so, this is just.
It's just, it may, it may not go anywhere, but it raises an interesting point.
What's what it states?
Right.
Well, yeah.
So, so.
Minnesota. Oregon.
I don't, I don't.
It would allow cottage housing, it would allow accessory units, duplexes, anywhere, anywhere single families allowed, it would allow these other housing.
To what, but what limits, gotta build a.
No.
Build parking, so there's all, there's other limitations on it, that would still probably prohibit, I think, multi-family, you're, you know, on-street parking. Utility, rules and regs, all that stuff, those are still, I think, we've probably changed very little, what we do here.
We still have buffer requirements and setback requirements, and block happens requirements, or restrictions, uh, but it's never a bad idea to work at significant zoning against sixty cent, or seventy, or eighty cent, or eleven, or eleven percent.
I think localities are probably opposed, it's just purely because there isn't a control.
Well, certainly, and then for us, it's a challenge just in terms of the balance of our tax basis. I don't think, you know, the housing, the, 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 the tax rate will be very low.
The other thing was to hear right-of-way design standards, certainly speaks to the natural resources chapter, that, uh, right-of-way is, is typically somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent, not a number. Uh, and so, thinking about how is that right-of-way design is really important, uh, is it designed with curb and gutter that, that, uh, moves water as quickly as possible, and that it's still, that it has some pipes? Uh, or, uh, could it do something with tree can, could it do something with bio spaces, is it designing for side ones, how much of that space is dedicated to vehicles, how much to, uh, how much to, uh, uh.
Yeah, I would say on the plus side, the, the existing utilities chapter is only fourteen pages long, so. Well, my question is, does the stormwater committee inform the, uh, comprehensive plan or vice versa, you know, you know? You know, at the same time, I don't, I don't know that one, I don't know that that committee's findings is going to dictate the comprehensive plan.
Their advisory.
Well, yeah, their advisory anyway, or, or maybe it does, maybe the, you're doing the, the chapter, and they're looking at stormwater, and I mean, let's see what those guys say. I, I would say I still don't know, I don't know which direction it's in, but I do think, for me personally, because of my priorities, I was thinking, especially with CIP is the next thing, when I talk about, I, you know, we gotta have some sort of plan for stormwater, that was apparent this past year, we had plenty of people complaining, and we're sort of like, we do CIP stuff, but it's also planning and, you know, making a priority, so whatever bits of everything that tie that to that, I think should be a priority, and, and, so, should, should. 'Cause it's not gonna get any better.
I don't know how we're addressing climate act broadly. Something that many localities are doing throughout the country. Not just about reacting to climate challenges, but mitigating them.
Alright, let's go. Let's see. Start at the center?
Alright, I picked up review of subdivision rules. Usually-
My favorite part.
Find that would be a controversial part of our job. It seems like the rules that we currently have in place were developed decades ago and circumstances have changed, but we haven't looked at those rules to see if it still makes sense. I mean, some of us suspect that they don't.
Zoning ordinance is just, in some ways, in some areas, just terribly out of date. It's old. We haven't looked at that. Some certain parts of the code. We brought up the last time, that lot averaging issue, which is an old section, which seems to be, you know, kind of a topic of conversation of late, but then there's the issue with pipe stems, which has been looked at more recently, but other problems have been uncovered. But just, again, in general, I think, you know, it's just the whole framework, and the fact that we have these two, there's R1A, there's R1B, these two zoning districts for the entire city. Oh, yeah. And that, you know, we have, you know, large swaths of the city are not performing, and we have, you know, so I feel like our single family zoning is somewhat crude. Worth another look. And as everyone knows in this room, this is not new standing here, but, you know, I always find it ironic when, you know, we'll be working on a, you know, a large mixed-use project, and we have one person to be about to speak, but then we have a one lot essentially by right subdivision. We get fifteen, twenty people come out, and it just shows you, obviously, you know, when it's in your backyard, literally, people come out, and, you know, it's not to the light of that, but it's something that clearly is very important.
Well, you talk about climate, you know, like that's clearly the whole issue of climate change, I think, could drive a lot of discussion.
Right, I mean, the previous surface alone is a big issue. I also think that because, um, the way staff wants to look at the zoning code has changed over time, and the staffing that are involved in our zoning code has changed over time. We are, we have code that says one thing, staff is doing another. And so averaging yards is a good example of it. And there are Virginia Supreme Court decisions that says you can't just ignore a part of the code because you don't think it's something you want to do anymore. We need to have, we need to have public meetings that say to people, you know, this code is no longer working for us. We're going to pull, and then actually pull it out of the code if we're not going to follow it. And we consistently have problems with, you know, we have interpretations that are going against what the minutes at the time where that code was put in. There's intentions and minutes, and we're going against those now with our re-interpretation. And if we don't want to average yards, I'm okay with that if we have a public process and pull the code. I'm not okay with us ignoring it because we decide it's no longer valid. I think that people that live in these neighborhoods have the right to have a public process. It's just like the, um, the block zoning, spot zoning thing we did over with the church on Maple. I don't think what we did there was actually legal. Um, I think that the original decision that the city attorney made was correct, or she said it wasn't legal. But if we want to do stuff like that, then we need, we need code that allows us to do that that's actually straightforward. Because we kind of manipulate the situation there. Now we have R1B lots in a R1A district. I don't think any citizen would expect that would be something that would be normal. I wouldn't. I mean, I live in a R1A district. If you suddenly manipulated the code to put a R1B next to me, I wouldn't understand why that was happening. Because I'm in a R1A district. So I think that we need to, we want to do these things, and we need to have public process, update the code, and make it clear. Otherwise, I just think we're not following the code.
And the reason that, I mean, that's kind of the symptom is what we're describing, and the cause is, I think, is that the code is so out of date. I mean, there are large, I mean, some parts would maybe still be fine. I think we can throw the whole thing out, but I think we need to look at it. And I know it's a big undertaking, that's probably why, but all jurisdictions, just big and small, you know, are often very reticent to take on a zoning rewrite. It's a very arduous task. It's difficult.
We had the ZOAC, right?
Well, you know, we did attempt it, and we're, just like with, unfortunately, the PED plan, which was actually a good plan. We worked hard, we had a really great plan, and then it fell apart at the council, um, due to different public comments. And so, you know, like, you know, we would have more sidewalk right now if we'd gone forward with the PED plan.
Or it's going away, right? We talked about before, this is a state issue, it's a national issue. We have to keep, we have to keep making runs. It's not always going to work. Glad to go to see other jurisdictions, is that they do make runs.
Right.
Someday, the things will align. We'll actually have something replaced. I'm afraid it's going to clog flat.
Right.
Because there is such momentum.
Well, I would say-
Especially with ground zero for a lot of this.
Yeah, and I think the problem with ZOAC is that we were trying to Band-Aid a bunch of stuff with ZOAC. Like fixed little pieces, and maybe, just like I was looking at that class, I was talking about looking at, maybe we really do need to reevaluate how we're doing our site plans. We need to maybe start from the bottom and pick, find a more modern plan that would work better, that would still protect neighborhoods, but would also work better for the future. And, um, you know, so maybe that's our problem, is that we should stop trying to Band-Aid code that's really old.
When's the last time we did a wholesale rewrite? Our current ordinance is-
Never.
Have we never, we've never done one? We've just amended the nineteen forty nine code.
Reasons you mentioned incremental changes are very favorable. I think with the total rewrite, you run the risk of no one really knows what you're getting. Often, when you adopt an ordinance, you just adopt the reset problem, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, and I mean, just, our big neighbor to the west, south, and north, Fairfax, I mean, they, they're now working on a par- partial zoning rewrite for the first time in forty-three years, and, you know, in nineteen seventy-eight ordinance that was. So they, Fairfax in its zoning history since nineteen forty-one has amended the code exactly three times. So they're now, and so they didn't want to take on a wholesale fourth time, but they're doing a pretty significant update. And that may be something that we could mirror in some ways. They're calling it the zoning modernization initiative.
Okay, we're going to do a refresher.
We don't have to call it that, but something similar, updating it for today's, you know, reality.
Oh, thank you, Tim. It looks green, so I didn't know if it would have lit up. I want lots of green, bright green. Thank you. Yes, so I had held on to mine because I wasn't thinking subdivision. When I wrote rethink single-family zoning, I was thinking specifically about, um, lot coverage from the perspective of stormwater, and I was thinking about our new housing chapter, which says we're going to rethink single-family in terms of allowing more accessory dwelling units to perform as a housing, so that was my motivation for it.
Zoning. Uh, I lumped them all together because everyone who hears something at the same time, um, so my read, uh, my read on this is that you work generally, how is the agency of operations developing the same single-family type of app? Uh, is it developed in a way that just like things, several other things, that is, that is, that will all look together? Alright, does anyone have free cards?
I knew you guys were all good. I know we cover this a lot, but, um, I think we could always spend more time talking about non-car transportation methods. Because you do all this stuff, but you go around town, it's still terrifying to bike or walk or cross streets. And you read more and more about cities doing drastic things, they just get rid of cars. Which you consider, you know?
There was just a link about what's happening with Division Zero around in Virginia. Uh, I think there are some situations in which there's hours of roadblocks and streetblocks. Uh, but I think that having, uh, it's certainly at least in the past, uh, there are structures in certain areas that are, uh, that, uh, commercial building, uh, it's very hard, which is a discussion.
I mean, relatedly, I guess, I said, yeah, street connectivity, that's similar to, maybe under your rationale for that one. Yeah, that's, that's the same.
I did as well. I mean, and I think, I think I said it last year too, so it's, you know, it's a tough topic, I think it was last year. Missing, missing lane sidewalk network connectivity, which is my favorite topic, utility pole obstruction on the sidewalk.
That's like four posted to the board.
I know, I know. I have a lot of slashes in there. Slash, 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 but it's all the same theme.
Fair enough.
Right, it's all. Every time I see, even if it's at that, it feels more than ever.
Yeah, well, I mean, because we talk about it a lot, but we go look around town, maybe we're not, you know, the sidewalks are narrow, they won't be, they don't exist.
And some of the poles-
There's no, you know, our definition of a bike thing is to have a faded picture of a bike on the road where the car is going, because it's like, we're just creating one of those. Now I don't have three.
Yeah, I don't have three. Let's see.
Missed them all two.
Uh, well, I just, uh, I just kind of tripped from where, uh, development regulation updates, just that intersection. Greenway Downs Cottage Housing, TDRs, um, review of single development, uh, single-family development. Yeah, it kind of, thanks.
I had TDR, but, so if that's getting in group with that, throw mine. And I'm out. I gotta go.
Do a whole outdated parking room, we're overparked now.
See, we're overparked now, but all I ever hear is people complaining about no parking.
It's really funny though, because like you go in Northgate, and their retail parking level is like a ghost town. And the stores have stuff, people in it, and I think they're just walking. Like, because my daughter goes kickboxing there, and there's never anyone driving in there. Yeah, and you go, and the same thing with Spectrum, I know people kept talking about that, but there's an entire lower level that has nothing in it. And I park my truck, because when I drive the big truck, I park it down there because I can park over four spaces, I feel like.
You're the one.
But there's no one there.
But no, I agree, but it's, I guess my point is, it's a complicated problem, because I agree we're overparked, but usually you hear people complain about no parking.
It's interesting, there was a big push, um, there was a staff on a discussion on City Hall project that, um, because the City Hall asked designers, uh, to, uh, and the zoning staff, uh, carrying through on the bird as we're, uh, bringing it forward.
Hard to use.
Uh, the spaces in Spectrum were breaking down, but everything, the spaces has been.
It's terrible for others to be there. It's never sort of that, those.
My office is George Mason Square, and we've got that falling apart deck, and the awkward thing is, like, there's plenty of spaces, but there's whole roads that are painted too narrow, and just repaint, you know, get rid of five spaces on that road, paint them also. On top. I'd rather be, I'd rather write it down when it collapses than have it. I never park a problem. I think we're overparked, but we also, I mean, if it comes before us, we've always issued, we've always granted it, so I think we recognize it's a commission. The question is, can we come up with a creative solution that actually encourages private owners of parking to share it in some way that benefits everyone?
Yeah, because some of our problem is that we have too much parking in one lot, not enough in another, or location-wise.
I mean, Jim Sawyer was just, look at, look at, there's plenty of parking spaces. You can't use this space to go here, you gotta park here.
We saw that with, uh, we saw it social, and we kind of worked that out. We were able to get a few private spaces. We helped to break that.
Yeah, and do people complain about that?
There are huge vacant lots, there's that, the office building that's right next to that, that's usually empty all weekend long.
Well, all those spots that were the problem spots.
Ridiculous spotlight.
Always empty. The problem spots.
So, it's hard. I mean, there are ways to give incentives, but, I guess there are also, I would encourage people, maybe use it part. Maybe where I got a drawn.
Well, I guess that's my, my point is, right now we have the worst of all, because we have a lot of space taken up for parking. We still have people complaining about it, nobody wants to walk, because that's not completely comfortable, so it's like everything's backwards.
It's difficult. We're a dense, but still somewhat suburban, you know, language barrier, and that, and that's where we see that fight, you know. If we're, you know, a little further west, I mean, it wouldn't be the argument, you know, totally auto-rependent. And here, just enough density and critical mass now, we are one of the, but.
And if we're a little, if we're a little more dense, no one would expect to be able to park.
Right, because we're kind of in that middle, and so people still have expectations of parking, usually parking for free.
Right. Well, my example is, I was at some PTA event, somebody found us on the back, and they were complaining that everything, they can never find us to park at Dogma. And it turns out she was at Northgate, and they're perfect, you should walk with the two blocks down there. And you tell a player that, they're gonna say, yeah, we have to run out of parking, because you should not be able to park, you should not drive two blocks to the, to the, to the.
Well, and some of that could show, again, how pleasant it is to walk there, how easy it is to.
Yeah, well, that's true.
People's mentality. It takes time to change that, and I think the city's going through that as we densify. People's, I think, expectations and, you know, what they expect to be able to do is changing. I'll see, I'm curious to see what happens. Founders Row, you know, my neighborhood, which is very, very walkable, I'm hoping most people will, we'll walk over there, but it's interesting to see, you know, as we densify.
I gotta, I gotta, that's my solution. Super pumped about it.
Technically illegal on the sidewalks.
So like, there's one in my neighborhood, uh, a lot of people about being physically overrun, and the neighbors that were on either side of that are very angry about it. They're gone now, and so there's a chance now for people in there to, like, make that path which is really bad. Yeah, I mean, I use it, but why do you want it to be, well, the lady would tell you that. Well, she would put stuff, she would actually literally try to obscure a little, but that's one of them. You know, there's another good one actually that comes over from Tucker Hill, owners of Six Feet Street, that is a lot of news in our neighborhood as well. And those are the things that, like, when I'm caught, like, they put up, I have to sell out of those companies, and they have to, and they don't. And so those are really helpful. There's a lot more, you know, there's a lot of them all over the city, and it's like a low hanging fruit.
Oh, yeah.
Man, we own, we just need to designate, what it is, there are trails, there are bike paths, and, and actually, you know, and make sure that the owners that are adjacent understand that they don't have to park, which they should know, and that is, it's all huge.
It's, right, it just needs some maintenance and some signage, and, right now people ask, like, the one near you on Folks Row, people use that, but it's kind of, oh, some people do. I've walked on it, because I know it's there. I mean, it is, well, it's well-worn, I think people do use it, you know, against, against the trail. But people don't, you walk by it, you're not sure, is that someone's driveway, it's kind of like overrun in the summer, am I allowed to go there? Is it, you know, what's happening back in there? All it needs is some signage and some maintenance.
Yeah, I think maintaining it as a travel thing is important, um, because it is desperately required by, um, so it changes weeks, but I think, um,
Right, and there are some that may not be, you know, railway, at the chestnut, um, there's this small, it's not that long. But right now, it's kind of, it's like a little park, it's just overrun. So it's either like, you know, oh, like, you can pick the cable, or the wood trail there, because it could be, it actually begins with, it's like a stupid square, it could be a little park. But, so I think we just need to look at the inventory, which ones are pathways, which ones, and we need to designate that there's parking on the trail there.
Uh, actually, maybe.
It is right away, yeah, they just have it right away.
Yeah, some of them are, or like that, somewhere, I don't know, we did a report, I don't know, it was, we actually, if you wanted to have the cut-throughs and pathways and bikes that you. You name it, it doesn't, it's, it's, and so it's a long, it's a, anyway, so it just, to me, that's a long, I mean, very simple thing, you just need to learn, you know, you designate the little ones, and, and other.
Are the best placed to increase park?
Right.
Do we have that? I mean, what's holding it up here? I mean, it's, it's kind of individual, because we have some here.
Uh, last time, uh, we did it in the NCC Board, brought it to the CECT, they liked it, brought it to Rink Parks, they liked it, brought it to Play, the official, they liked it, brought it to council. Um, and there was some concern about, uh, to, we joined, we came up about this, and we helped out, we had meetings, and we gone all around the city and talked to each person who was next door. They didn't say anything, but, uh, there was a concern about more public outreach, and I think at the time, we were just looking at sort of, you know, actually saying, we need to think about how to do it to control, and I think that's what we did there. Yeah, it might be, um, you know, you gotta go, you gotta do these meetings where people are, since it's arguing with the issues. Um, so it might be something, Farmers Market, uh, it might be, uh, you can pack on this one at a time, so I think we're not, uh, uh, the Creed Space Managers come out, and they start tearing out bushes and some signs. The, uh, the, yeah, looking over this direction, we asked ESC chairs about whether this is something that the, uh, the Green Action Network, the.
Oh, the neighborhood?
Yes.
It's kind of non-existent. It's on the plan to be, uh.
Yeah, to reconstitute that, because that was a really powerful tool for outreach.
So we are.
Right.
A house, they were also, the vacuum, they were trying to do, they could use recycling, they were buying houses, and that, 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 okay. Well, he's the one who asked him to have recycling, and I'm like, what?
Don't put glass in, that costs us money.
Alright, let's see. Does anyone have two left?
Uh, I don't know how much we have control of this, but redevelopment of commercial areas, I feel like we've had some success, and that's cool, but a lot of things that we want to do cost money. And our best way of getting money is to continue to encourage redevelopment of our limited commercial areas into bigger, better performing things. And I know it's the EDA kind of a mandate as well, so it's not really, but.
Parking laws.
I mean, parking and stuff, but we still have, we still have several, you know, commercial areas that are in a good spot to get a, you know.
You know, I, we, one thing we've talked about in the past was reviewing some of the code related to commercial buildings. Height things, and like, how pad sites are treated, stuff like that, that could possibly, so we could look at as part of that.
Are you thinking about sort of policy-wise, or are you thinking about?
Me? Um, I was thinking at a very high level, I don't have any specific, really, ideas at this point, I just, I'm thinking about the city and planning, you know, future success, like, we can look at Founders Row, and I think that's going to lead to lots of benefits, like you mentioned, all the intersections that, you know. And, and I know it's always, um, you know, there's some people that aren't big fans of these developments, but they do drive a lot of, a lot of the successes we have. Both the money, but also just the actual action, and I think if we decide, okay, we've done all the redevelopment, we're gonna do for the next twenty years, then that would be unfortunate. Because whether they're, you know, West Jefferson, or, you know, I love Eaton Center the way it is in many ways, but that's a giant chunk of land that's kind of falling apart. Um, you know, there's, there's the bowling alley site, there's lots of places still out there, so. Anything we can do to encourage that, or at least not let it seem like we're not interested in that happening. But, and part of it is like, this is Broad and Washington, make sure that process goes smoothly, and there's a lot of work to be done there, I don't know how great their latest plan is, but we should always be moving those things efficiently and not making it more complicated.
I, I didn't have that on my post-it note, but it's something I've been thinking about a lot from the perspective of, um, voluntary concessions and the special exception process. Um, and what's in the secondary criteria, um, because our voluntary concessions process, um, is a food bites the wrong word, but it's kind of a kitchen sink, is everything added kind of process, and the secondary criteria, I don't know if they're useful in terms of truly defining what's exceptional in a kind of clear way. Um, so I, I like the idea of thinking more strategically about what is special and a special exception.
Well, and I also think part of those, that whole thing, it's like, we either need to recognize that the pie is a certain size, and it's split up. You know, the developer at the end, they doesn't really care how you split it up, or figure out how to make that pie bigger. Because I think we think it gets bigger when we fight over how to split it up, but it doesn't get any bigger, we just sort of split it up. So every hundred grand you want for that library is going to come out of the schools, which is just how it is right now, and so if we, if we can always make that pie bigger, cool. If we can, let's just, right, let's stay low where we're actually fighting.
Or prioritize what we're really at, it's two of three.
Yeah, exactly. He's got one with like fourteen things on it.
It's all the same, same topic. Stormwater, I think I'm, I think I'm just having a hand in this one.
Yeah.
Stormwater infrastructure, and then I just related it to zoning, like, a lot of lot of coverage.
Water with some ideas of what to do.
No ideas. Has a friend, has a friend, huh? Well, I mean, I think all of the, right, and then the question is, you know, what is the, what's the lowest hanging fruit in mind? What's the long-term situation? You know, I don't know the history of it, in terms of how we've gotten to the point where it's so bad. My understanding of it, there's parts of the city where it's just super overwhelmed, and I don't know, that doesn't seem like this is anything that happens overnight. And I don't know the history of that infrastructure and why it's not had more attention in the years, I mean, I do know, like, I spent the past ten, fifteen years building schools and things like that. So I can understand why people get, uh, priority, but, um, so that's one question is, how, how does, you know, let's fix, how are we not gonna? Um, but I assume that it's a con, you know, the way you get there is a combination of old stuff performs less efficiently over time, or weirder rainstorms, and then a lot more lot coverage and, you know, so they all tie together. Um, but I assume that it's a con, you know, the way you get there is a combination of old stuff performs less efficiently over time, or weirder rainstorms, and then a lot more lot cover issues, I don't know, so, so they all tie together.
It's an issue of the credits, you know, also on the other side, because I don't think anybody owns that, and that initial, uh, task.
The, the fee, or something?
Yeah, that.
The, the fee, or the, okay.
How, how.
Uh, the credits against, okay, what you do.
Yeah, yeah.
So we gotta bring it.
Put that together, uh, initially, and it's mostly definitely commercial areas, not, it's, it's, it's a green infrastructure, it's a residential infrastructure, it's a, it's a, it's absorbing stormwater.
Anyway, my thought is, you know, no one owns that, and it's a, it's a, it was happened to us, it's.
Would you say no one owns it?
It's just there, it was, it was an ad hoc task force to put together, you know, and, uh, there's a way that it has to be a public process, it's a, it changes to it, but it does have more energy at this point than I.
Well, I think a lot of what the stormwater task force is gonna be thinking about is, is what to do about flooding now versus something that I'm.
Correct, that's right, so that's, that's different.
Chapter might look at and say, look, we need to have a target of infiltrate, we're gonna have exhalations hit us in the storm, we need to infiltrate wire those, we need to get the rest of the pipes.
So how do we use credits to, to work, right now, we kind of did this thing initially, it's just staying at the place.
Yeah, there is some zoning parts of it too, so like, there are houses that went in on Grove that were actually on a stream bed, and so then they were twenty-four seven pumping water out of their basement. To heat it from, in wet, and some of them were pumping the water directly into the street, they were isolates down the street. So, yeah, and so the, I guess, we don't have, and then we also have, um, older homes, especially in Broadmoor, that are actually, um, piping their water directly into the sewer. So, um, so the question, you know, where, where, you know, where's the zoning code that would stop that from happening, or, you know?
It's probably enforcement issue, right?
Building code today, it's, well, well, it's grandfathered in, and we haven't done anything about the grandfathered in part, but, but it is against building code, but it has happened in the city multiple times. Um, at least at Grove, it was a big deal, because they had a major ice problem in the winter, um.
People don't sometimes, right, also discharge it to the street.
Right, so, I mean, but somehow it was still happening, so I just, I mean, I questioned, like, is there something we should be looking at there in terms of, um, development, single family? Why, you know, why was that happening on Grove, and, you know, and then people had problems with it, and, uh, there's a whole thing there. They were told it was a civil issue, because the city had already given the occupancy permit, and, you know, too bad, too bad, kind of thing, so. Some of that, I mean, some of that stormwater is that kind of thing, and, and so it's, and as a city, on the ones that are grandfathered in, is there, you know, is there something that we can do to. Make sure that those things are disconnected from the sewer lines, or those pipes are, yeah.
And those are always delicate conversations, uh.
Well, one of the things I was just thinking, like, when you talk about the stormwater taxes, perhaps people who are still connected to the sewer should have an extra stormwater tax for that. Because you think about it, when you get your water bill, you have the water bill, and then you have a sewer bill for the water that you put in the sewer. When they're putting water in the sewer, extra water, so shouldn't they be taxed for that and such, anyway, so anyway, that was one of the things, I just think that that's something that we have to think, think about too.
We're talking about, since groundwater into the, into the treated sewer system that relevant.
Right. Well, that was part of it, so the, the problem with that is a lot of that's uphill from Hillwood, and Hillwood has consistent, um, sewer backups that come into their basement. Because of the actual water in the sewer system, that's part of the reason, there's some pipe issue sizes as well, and, um, because on the Fairfax County side, there's some smaller pipes, and they've had backups at the one. That didn't help, but doesn't, doesn't, doesn't help that in Brahma, extra water is coming in uphill from. But anyways, so, I mean, there's some, there may be some stuff in there that could be looked at, that's all I'm saying. There's some, seeing things related to development that can make difference, and, and it's funny, like, you know, a lot of our commercial development has actually helped with our water issues, but people don't actually believe that a lot of times. So there is a P R issue there too.
I think it may be a misconception, right, that, that a surface lot in a, in a low slum, which is a way, uh, and what goes up is a building that has the same footprint as that lot, and if a low slum building is taller, it, it doesn't actually increase the pervious surface. Uh, and often times they do include detention, detention on site, so there may be a, a misconception, right, on, uh, uh, let's see, does anybody have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, uh, West Side Story.
Ah, West Side.
Well, the reason, the reason I picked it is because we have this unusual situation where we're just making advisory, uh, recommendation on site plan.
Yeah.
And so I just sort of struck this, it's not a, it's.
Yeah, also at that, joint meeting, we had the council look like, oh, how are we gonna build a site plan? I was like, yeah, uh, you know, check out the dumpster loading zone, something like that, I don't know, I do wonder what their expectation is of those, or advice, advisory.
Yeah, I fully agree with this one, I just, uh, thought, I didn't wanna waste a card on something, anyway, but this is a pretty big priority, um, and, uh, I know that the council has. Three Paul reached out to get guidance, my formal role, my equation, um, to help them, because they're lost, you know.
Well, it's not surprising, they don't, they don't feel like.
No, that's not, that's not a criticism, why would they, why would they know it, so I think they are going to be looking for our assistance, and it'll be.
And I mean, I, that's a good question, like, I think, I think the reason it was crafted this way was to ensure, or maybe I guess to make the developer feel better that, that the stuff would get done, I don't know why.
Less risk.
Yeah.
Less, less risk, so it's entirely possible, like, the thing that, I wouldn't surprise me if the city council, I mean, you guys basically did something like you normally do, whole rubber stamping, but if you. Can't get it done, sweep in, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think we're happy to.
Well, that's what I was told by several councilmen, they expect us to do the job of checking that everything is correct, and that the, you know, that, that the fire safety is correct.
Yeah, I think we're. Just.
All the, the technical parts that we look at, yeah, they want us, they expect us to do that, and then, you know, unless they see something that they're gonna question, then they're probably not gonna do that much of stuff.
The sad thing, it'll maybe the opposite, it'll harder to get site plan approved, you know, that's.
Well, well, you know, I voted against it, and, and they, some of the council asked me, why did I vote against it, I said, because you guys, if you have a reelection, and people change out, you could actually have a council that comes in that's not. Align with it, and I said, that's.
Got some councils, a good show.
Right, well, I know, but we did, but you don't know that for sure, and I said, the reason the planning commission does the site plan is because we're not looking at political issues at that point, we're looking at structural issues.
I don't, I don't. Yeah.
Fire safety, and, you know, you know, things that are related, that are very defined, we have a very defined list of what we're looking at, and I said, so it's not political, so, anyway.
But that, that's, I think that's part of figuring how, what, what they expect from us, and how.
The other component of that is how we interact with, uh, the county, in terms of the effort that they have underway, um, probably, you know, just, you know, just task force meetings, uh, just to, uh.
And are we still a couple of years ahead of them on that?
Yeah.
So will our thing be basically done before they?
Well, certainly our plan, I think, I mean, we gotta rebuild our high school.
Well, our high school's gonna be done in less than a year, they're gonna be tearing out the whole high school this time.
Yeah, their, their comp plan, that's right, I think it's September.
Yeah, so September of this year, the comp plan, and that's what happens.
So I think, I think we're, it's important, but I do think it's, like, our thing, done before they start taking.
Well, right, but we definitely want the roads to line up, and want the traffic to flow, we're actually in a very good position, because they're able to get, fill, fill our retail spaces and everything, based on the fact that there's gonna be even more development next year. So we're in a better position than they are in terms of filling our stuff, so it's actually.
Well, they could just, could hop some residential.
Right, they could do all they want, you know, and, and they may.
Go over and shop in our, right.
Well, exactly, and I think that's gonna be an advantage to us, get our stuff, because they'll fill it based on, I know, that some development is gonna be a part of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so we should definitely.
This is the last one, no, this is just what I talked about, this updating the community character.
Um, sure.
I, I just think it's really, I, I do feel like that's another, along with some of the things we get with the infill and, you know, neighborhood stuff, I think we get, I think we really do need to look at our design stuff again. And getting a little bit further, it's doing, it's, it's actually, it's kind of related to the pedestrian, um, connectivity and disabilities as well, because so much of how we design things affects how people can. Walk through it, bike through it, travel through it, a lot of it has to do with the way our sidewalks are, and our other connections. Kind of like, you know, when we're talking about the West End, we're talking about having that entryway on, um, facing the, you know, the parking lot for giants, so that people can cross over and get into that development. And we've all talked about how the steps don't look very welcome, so that's another big, that's a big design issue that can affect how people feel, like, you know, can I get over to this project easily? I think Broad and Washington had some of those issues too, you know, remember, there's a lot of places where you have to go up steps or go around things to get into it, so.
And there's grade, it's a challenge.
Yeah, well, I know the grade's a challenge, but that's.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that when you see a new building or a new, kind of like Mosaic, when the first time I drove by Mosaic, I was like, it's just like this giant building, and I'm like, is there anything good in there? I actually can go in there for a while, because it's just like, the Target bone isn't so unwelcoming, and then I went in the Target garage, and it's so ridiculously laid out, and I was like, gosh, not fun.
So we have a lot of important parts up here, uh, um, so far, I think, so.
It's just.
Perhaps we'll see a bit of that, uh, or, uh, store, uh, um, um, storm water.
I, I would like parking with transportation. I think those two are very related to each other.
Yeah, this is something happening. You know, we also didn't mention until I think about this is the Houston area plan. That's uh, that, I wish I actually would have my cards now because.
Oh, it's too late.
No, you can take my one out of the big pile because there's plenty of them over there. No, because I, because I forgot about, I forgot about that because that is the area plan we really, we haven't done yet. And that area is actually really important. Yeah, but that area is very important to us, another place close to the metro station. We have a good amount, you know, we have some commercial development there, but we also have a lot of like empty lot stuff that relate to cars and things that we don't care about. And um, and we know Fairfax County is looking hard at trying to make changes on their side in that, in that area.
Yeah, there are two, uh, there are two policy pieces out there.
I mean, and I think that we need to think about, so when you look, when you read um, like Ford and GM, when you look at their future plans, what they see in the future. Um Ford's one of those companies who says that ten years I see less people owning cars themselves than twenty years and even less and that.
You've seen their standard.
Yeah, well, but no, but, but this is, this is like, you know, I work with a lot of trade associations that deal with different groups and um, those as well. And, and when you look at them, they, they're not assuming that they're gonna continue to, that most people continue to own their own specific car. They see more rideshare and more, you know, Uber type stuff or even, you know, just more ways of getting around. And then on just having a car when you want it on demand. But, so when they, you know, so when you look at that kind of stuff. We have those two big dealership, well, we have that big dealership lot there and then we have also the repair um facility that's on Roosevelt. So it's just, I think it's good to think about what could happen in those spaces. And also there's, there's definitely some underutilized pieces of land there. The one where the old um, that office was, it seemed to be an abandoned building right there in the middle of Seven Corners. And um, stuff like that, so.
I agree. Uh, it's a need, uh, and certainly it's always, uh, you know, the thought on the staff side, please, we're wrapping up by now. Uh, I think that the scratchy with West Broad of tackle was a little raised, lunch was good. I think West End tackling three and lunch would be helpful. Uh, and we'll, 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 we'll discuss this one way away. I think it will stay, except when uh, West End's corner may not be. Uh, so like I said at the beginning, staff will take this back, uh, and put together some, some innovative milestones and suggested uh, discussion to take. And we'll try to get that back to your meeting to meet the meeting. Uh, the, the intent for the quick turnaround is not to rush the conversation, but rather to get it wrapped into the commission's agenda report. So that when you guys go to council, I don't know if you say, here's what we did last year, like also this is uh, what we.
That sounds good. Sounds good to me. All right.
I, I have a, a question, something that was on my mind as I was thinking about the work plan that relates to the first question I had, which is um. You know, how does this relate to the comprehensive land chapters and all the short meeting and long term actions? Um, I'm a newbie to this commission, but does staff periodically report to plan the commission updates on where we are in terms of making progress? Of short meeting and long term actions in the different components of plan chapters?
Uh, we have done it on an ad hoc basis, uh, so I know there was a joint compare, sorry, a report aired for joint meeting with the CACT and the ESC uh, on transportation. Uh, and certainly that.
I, I would be interested in knowing how they're doing, particularly on the, the most recently adopted one. So we have the progress against another discussion of short meeting term group actions, because I would imagine that might drive future work plan sessions.
Yeah, certainly.
All right. Yeah, so, so we're good on the advanced stuff. Are you guys gonna go back?
On AA, yeah.
Synthesize all this.
Yeah, we'll synthesize this, try to put it together into a, a document that looks like what's up on the screen. Is this a, I, I should ask actually, is this format, is it really helpful to the commission? In terms of establishing uh, a agreement on what the commission's going to do and, and uh, proximity time for these things.
Just more green, otherwise it works better. Yeah, work, I don't work for them.
Yeah, got it. I've recently learned that not everyone is interested in the long term, so.
Alright, so now A B C I P planning, because is that time of year?
It is.
Uh, and, well, you.
Sure, so uh, as a work session item for tonight, staff is requesting that the commission provide concurrence uh, on how to tackle the, the CIP meetings. So it's a format. Uh, there is a recommendation from staff. Um, as part of also uh, uh, identifying the format, staff's also looking for Mr. Tyler, uh, items to review. So uh, for folks who, who don't remember, uh, the, the CIP used to be a series of three, four, five meetings. All of which took two plus hours and they were on odd nights. Uh, it was a very long process, uh.
The conclusion we had no one, it just went on.
Yes, often the conclusion was, all the dollars are already programmed. Uh, and so the only way to build something new is to take away something that, uh, happened. So uh, I don't think that has to be the way the meetings are scheduled. Uh, I think we can do it in a more uplifting way. I think I can also do it in a more uniformed way and uh, more efficient way. So uh, what's up here in the suggested timing section is that there would be three meetings. Uh, the first would be your next meeting, January twenty first, then February third, and then February eighteenth, your action meeting. Uh, in both of the meetings, uh, there would be about a twenty minute presentation from the deputy city manager. And then there would be about twenty minutes allotted for Q and A. And the idea is that on the first session, there'd be discussion about ongoing projects or already committed projects. The library, the high school, South Washington Street, uh, Big Chief's Park. Uh, what are the projects that are, that are already programmed, that are already in construction, that are being requested on the public? Uh, and that would be a conversation both about the project status as well as any funding questions. Second meeting would be about future budgets. So we've already talked about what's uh, what's appropriated, what's budgeted, what's going to be in construction. The second one would be what's gonna help in the future, how much is, how much money is gonna be available, what's it going to, what probably is the commission. Uh, and then the third meeting, there would be uh, a time for any final Q and A, but really this is intended for uh, essentially a cleanup session. That if the commission had direction to staff, uh, at that February third meeting, February eighteenth, we'd be yapping for staff to do some new organizations.
And a, and a few years ago, or seven years ago now. Council switched to this sort of like TikToks cycle where one year was new project could be introduced and the next year was kind of like, you're just gonna burn it, right?
Yes.
And this is a new project year?
Yeah, so this is an odd year, right? Uh, so I've had this conversation and it would be good to get clarity on this, that uh, odd or even, there's some confusion uh, by the participants. Uh, not by the person running, but by, by, by everyone else, uh, about whether odd or even refers to the fiscal year budget or the calendar year. So we're in calendar year nineteen, acting on fiscal year twenty one.
Okay, regardless of that, is this a year where proposing new, is this a year where we're proposing new projects? Or is this a year where in theory only updates?
I think this is a year for new projects, but, but we have to.
Why don't we add a system?
Uh, last year there was a concern that we were in the throes of moving between city halls. And I think, I should say that the motivation for the even odd is not to slow down or earn a slight conversation. But the same staff that knows the CIP is the same staff that will be doing this, uh, that, uh, constructs this year. Uh, and since it does still involve lots of employees.
Right, and, and again, I mean, if I recall, like, I think we added in some projects, you know, off year when we weren't in. So it wasn't, I think it was more like, doing the whole thing every year seems silly because not that much changes. I mean, that's, um. Yeah, and we had years of placeholder schools, so that's finally sorted out. So presumably, most of our, our CIP budget has been spoken for for the foreseeable future. However, you know, when people come in, they complain of the stormwater situation, I found myself thinking like, if we don't address this turn to CIP process. It's gonna happen, it's definitely gonna be a CIP item. So uh, you know, I don't know the timing of all that, since I'm looking at the stormwater stuff to sort it out. It's month eighteen, but I think we should start looking at that second CIP and thinking, where are we gonna put some? Stormwater improvements on here, like what year, how much roughly, I don't know. But uh, but I like this general approach. I think having four or five meetings always seemed a little bit too much. And kind of, basically maybe do anything else for a couple of months, which was unfortunately, I don't know. But I do think it's important that if we get some authority issue, we need to, like, does this give us any wiggle room? If, if November eighteenth, we're like, hold on a second, let's tell these things, that was all, is there any wiggle room?
Uh, this, uh, February eighteen action item, uh, is uh, coordinated with the council of the CIP, so I think we're flexible for especially.
Okay, so if we really needed to, we could do that, but we should be, should be in a position to give file an action on the grid, that's what we should have. Okay. Um, I think that's good. I think could. Could uh, s- could simply give us any kind of, just like a f- two minute future projects highlight and surreal at the end of the ongoing projects update meeting? Just to get our brains thinking. Yeah. It, it, to the extent that that's, that's fine stuff, you know? Just because then we could come to that February third meeting, with some kind of questions, hopefully then we'll probably get answered with our presentation. But if not, aren't you ready to ask them? I'm just sort of thinking, I don't know if you. Cause, cause there is a lot, I guess there's sure we could, if we had some challenge, come to the February third.
Yeah, I was, because I was a little concerned, because one reason we had those four or five meetings is because some of them from each of the departments would come and give three questions about their future thing. And you're right, it doesn't make sense because sometimes we didn't have that many questions.
Or it's like, okay, you can explain to us all the state we use for our programs.
Right. Yeah, but I, I guess it does, like, with basically just two prep meetings, you know, we're gonna have, we need to hear, see it ahead of time in case we say, hey, I do have a real issue about. I don't know, one time we had an issue about a fire truck. And so we had the, the fire, people came to talk about why they really need this truck and then we decided they didn't need it right there. So it's like, things like that, which you can't really make that decision sometimes without talking to the right person. So as long as we get it ahead of time, so we see something and we could reach out to staff and say, hey, I do have a question about this, so someone needs to be there to answer it. I would be okay with the, because the schedule makes sense, the only thing I think, unless we. I mean, I guess we don't have to stay with the black and white that it's the ongoing future. If we had a question about ongoing at the ongoing meeting, then someone could come to the future meeting, still talking about ongoing.
Well, and I, and I'm not personally super concerned about it because I think, you know, we're on, it's not like, it's not really making decisions this year. On money or spending any time soon, because then we have to worry about the problems we're going through. So I do think in past years, we have had issues with stuff that was about to happen, so we had time to sort it out. To me, I just wanna make sure we have time to, we're not gonna be talking about stuff that is really gonna get going down the road by a couple of years. So um, I think this is probably fine, but it would be great if we had materials. Like I said, yeah, materials advance and at the end of that, you should change from your first message about ongoing practice, like ever to come back in two weeks and here's the, it's just really high level, I think that we gotta talk about. It's not like we have such a, so maybe you can send me questions at one point, if you have time for that.
Right, the, uh, it really sent me questions ahead of time, uh, while Carly's got up on the screen now. This is uh, the list that I'm gonna be communicating with the last here. And so this was a list of questions, uh, that I was able to communicate in advance of the presentations and so.
Yeah, yeah.
And she was able to tailor it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So so far I've heard about interest in uh, sort of stormwater and what to program.
Well, I think we're also, I mean, it's funny, we see these questions, but I still, I'm, what's going on with city hall? What's our delay is?
It was still deliberate.
We're, we're deliberate.
Just send them this one again.
So I think we definitely want to know where, where the city hall is, but I've heard there's some additional costs. Um, what things haven't been done that were supposed to be done and, you know, where is, is that gonna be with CIP or where's it gonna go?
This is from a muscle lot, kind of a situation.
Well, that and I just, I think it'd be good to know what happened with that project, because we've been a lot of time off and I'd like to know.
The lessons learned comment reminds us of something that, at some point I'd love to, and maybe I will just bring it up in the CIP process. But uh, in my, in my, my business, every project we do, after we do a retrospective where it's a pretty formal process. But the whole point is like, hey, let's not make the same mistakes over and over again. It's not, and I have no idea what you guys do at city hall, but. And I don't wanna, I'm not trying to be critical of anybody, but I, I think from where I sit, both the library and city hall projects. We have made mistakes that we should learn from and I don't, I wanna make sure that somebody somewhere is sitting down and figuring out what mistakes were made. And we have learned from them, otherwise it's gonna be hard for me to, thumbs up, you have millions of minutes of dollars to future projects unless someone said, hey, we learned this lesson last night. And we did that mistake again. So again, I'm not trying to, oh, you're someone out something, you know, feel that, but if you don't learn lessons from mistakes, you shouldn't be one of them. So, well, city hall, library too, at some point, I don't think it has to be part of the system necessarily, but. It's true, okay, it's, you're gonna spend a few days digging in on those and figuring out.
And then so many things, like I know the fellows project, we do have stuff in the CIP for that, you know, um, from, because at our last um, Brexton Park meeting, we talked about. What would be putting in the CIP for themselves. So there's money for fellows, because that's the ongoing issue.
That's how it's done.
Um, still have the potential for an LED street light, it's supposed to be conversion.
Conversation.
Maybe all we've done is conversation.
I don't know, we talked about Tim, we talked about it all year, isn't that what you, oh, you actually want us to.
I think it's still relevant because uh, most of the constituents already done that. You know, they're between their original mission, negotiate cheaper rates, so it's a smart.
And, and we're, I'm assuming get updates on the others projects that are still outstanding, like the South Washington Street stuff?
It does.
We've been working on for like eight or, has it been like eight, nine, ten years now, something?
Ever since I.
Yeah, and then, um.
Twelve years.
Yeah, and then we know the West Broad Street pedestrian crossing, they're coming, but there's still like another year or so out, right?
For the West Broad?
Yeah, those, yeah, but, but I definitely wanna hear an update on South Washington. But I, I think all that money has already been done in CIP, hasn't it, at this point?
Uh, in funds were recognized, uh, I think in the last cycle, uh, construction units came in, uh, cities over there, which are still.
I think the main, I'm, I'm curious what the hospital is, working the CIP.
Well, I think this is the advantage of throwing in uh, the, uh, what I've heard in terms of ongoing projects, city hall, library, South Washington, West Broad. Some future projects, stormwater, fellows, and.
Right, and I, I guess my point about, and my point with stormwater, for years we knew we were gonna build a new high school sometime in this five year timeframe. We had no idea how much this would cost. And I remember we had this placeholder and we was kind of double factoring to the map and it was always this, we're torn about if that was appropriate because it's sort of, what's the point? But I thought it was, I always thought it was smart because like, we knew we had to do it, we knew we had to keep it front and center. And well, we figured something out. I think it's similar with stormwater, I don't think anyone thinks there's money, next year's CIP, or even a plan for us, but if there was money. But if we don't, if we start putting in there somewhere, even if it doesn't fit for now, you know, that looks.
Well, the other thing that's uh, you know, that might be worth pointing to, which you're talking about is that there is starting to be a more serious conversation between these people inside the city hall. Is uh, you know, some of these stormwater fixes that are suggesting, uh, could sometimes be uh, uh, greater public expense than the value of the property that's being.
Well, that's where that transfer development.
And so some of this is a conversation about what do you wanna do with the stormwater for, that it, it, it might be a good use for the stormwater fees to start library helping.
Right, or like, well, I mean, it's part of the idea of the transfer development rights, right, is you get someone who owns a house in a place that's hard to keep from flooding.
Right.
Let that intensity go away and move over there.
And in either case, I'm not thinking about a, a for sale, these are both options that the public.
There's also how we um, implement stormwater regulations, right? Are we adhering only to the ten year uh, capture requirements? I always say that except attention to retention, but in public infrastructure projects, uh, are we looking at the twenty five or one hundred year storm? Or are we thinking about how we design any of these, and see if we're right? Or are we doing a kind of some sort of competitive analysis to figure out that maybe it doesn't make sense to capture one, uh, the one hundred year storm, but it financially makes sense to capture the fifty? So we should go beyond the ten year storm?
I'll say one thing, I was on the previous stormwater task force that determined that we should have a tax and we should have projects. And we were talking about you don't know what project would be done, but at the time, entire long list of projects were put together. And generally, they, they have been done. I mean, there's a, there are a rain garden and the Lincoln Park was part of that list. There was a, a lot of um, stormwater retention areas were put in some parts of Bronmott where there was a problem. So those projects have been going on, the tax money has been used. And generally what was going on is that in, you know, within the city, we have a senior engineer in charge of the stormwater and also our Chesapeake Bay ordinance. So a lot of what that money was being used was meeting goals under Chesapeake Bay ordinance, so we wouldn't get fined. So, so there is, so I'm just saying that there are projects that have been done.
I wasn't just saying we were doing it, but my point is like, the, the places, some of the places where the stormwater infrastructure is insufficient, have been insufficient for years.
Right.
And that has no action been taken, and those are.
Well, and I, and you're right, and part of that is.
Like a rain garden in Lincoln, in Lincoln Park, and didn't even solve the stormer from the Lincoln Park.
I know, but it's like, things like that, like everything was done, um, everything has been done, it has, is meet, to do.
Sure, right.
Is to do with Chesapeake Bay ordinance more than anything else, really. It's, it's less about what actually is happening here, but what, how we meet our requirements.
Well, and that's come up.
Because if we don't meet them, there's like some million dollar fine.
Right, that a lot of where Chesapeake Bay is pushing towards the quality of the water that's going into the bay.
Into your basement, right?
Well, it's an ecosystem, it's an ecosystem that a lot of people depend on. Uh, and so there was this funky state effort to say, well, actually we're doing the same bay. Uh, and a lot of that is, is pushing coming out of all these local jurisdictions and so that's what is done. Uh, and, and now there's this, this question about, well, what did the stormwater company do for us going to save the bay? But it may not have saved the, 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 the storm.
Right, and that's the problem, that's the tension.
Well, and they're, they're having that in there. I mean, the Chesapeake Bay ordinance wasn't designed to save the beach, so it's a different, it's a different tool, it's all around.
Right, and that's why, I'm just saying, like, don't think that that first task force didn't do something that was really, really important.
No, no, that's not what I was saying.
And we had a lot of really good projects. In most cases, um, Jason Whitstrom, who was our former engineer that dealt with this, we talked to Jason. He tried very hard, um, we scored all projects, there was a scoring system for, for how much it would help us on Chesapeake Bay. And how much it would help the city in terms of residences and flooding. And so all the projects at the top were supposed to be win-win, win, help the city and do that. And so like, some of the stuff they did in Bronmott actually did help flood in that was going into some of the yards. And um, and they did some work, there was some work, I think, on growth related to that.
And I think we did a lot with fairly limited funds. I don't recall there being any multimillion dollar stormwater efforts, which is, I think, what is good to be required.
And then, and then some of the money has been part of a joint project with Vipis, um, where we get homeowners to deal with water issues in their own yard and keep the water in their yard. Because really, I mean, with that task force found, and I think the new task force will find the same, is most of our water issues is water coming out of residential yards. And so that's a problem for us.
Keep the water in your basement as well.
Right, but I mean, that's a problem for us because it's individual landowners have, we have to change how water is reacting on their own lot.
Keep the water in my basement.
Yeah, but anyway, so there is like a ongoing um, grant program that Vipis is running that try to get people to do things on their own.
Yeah, yeah, all that's.
To, just to reiterate that we have an outdated watershed management plan, and we don't have a green infrastructure plan. And I would hope that any stormwater infrastructure projects that make it onto the CIP have been sort of screened against a more strategic approach to.
Right, which is why.
Where are the problems and what's upstream of those problems and how, what's the most cost effective way to capture the water before it winds up in that basement or in that parking lot?
Yeah, which is why I don't think we're talking CIP implement this year.
Right, it's planned.
Right, but if you look at the CIP now, there's not, there's not any money two years from now, three years from now, four years from now either. But I think, I think there is stormwater work that probably needs to be done earlier than there is currently any budget for. And I think it would hurt to stick something in there that kind of sticks out like a sore thumb to force us to figure it out.
Well, and then.
Like with the high school, there was never enough money to build the high school, and now we have almost built a high school.
Right, and, and the part of the problems are things because it's across lines. So Hillwood, some of Hillwood's problem is actually pipes on the Fairfax County side that we don't have the right to change.
So we've gotta make sure that all that water doesn't ever.
Right, I know. Well, and then, I mean, there's, there's these similar kinds of things going on where we're, we have line, you know, we're very small. So what happens on either side of us, from Arlington to Fairfax on the bigger side of us, that really affects the way, so there wasn't a lot of flooding. Like a trip's run until some things were done upstream in Fairfax County, but we found that out when we were on the task force. Like there was fifteen years ago, there was a development that went in that started pushing a lot of water down. And then Fairfax had to rebuild part of that stream bed too. So anyway, I'm, you know, that's why I think it's good, we have a task force. And, you know, people just need to understand, like, the first task force was partially about Chesapeake Bay ordinance, only because we weren't meeting our quotas. And it's about making sure that clean water was going in the four mile run and trip run and that we weren't being caught up in, um, in getting fined. Because when the federal government took over, you know, when the three states ran it, or four states ran it, we weren't penalizing ourselves much. The federal government took it over and then that's part of the reason we had to do it.
All right, so I've got my list, uh.
Can I just add one?
Sure.
And, and not to sound particularly one note on the comp plan, short term, medium term, long term actions, but just, you know, we've got short term and natural resources chapter. Or like short or medium term is stormwater and you were just talking about stormwater, we go through that. process of figuring out what we want to implement short term, and obviously, not all of the actions on the comp plan chapters are capital improvement projects, but are we, um if you could, I guess, my question is, how do these capital improvement projects tie to within the comp plans, and are there any gaps that can within the components, plan chapters that we've updated in the last couple of years, transportation, the mobility one, parks, housing?
I think it's.
Are there actions that we said are short or medium term that have not been funded, and are we okay with that, because it's all moved on, or?
We're not okay with it.
I have to assume that there's plenty of stuff in the comp plan.
That's not funded.
It's a lot of stuff.
Have we shed, like, can we, do we know what's missing, and do we wanna use that to kind of?
Well, I mean, that's a good question, we can go through it, I mean, I think um I think the C I P process is where it goes to figure out which of those things can be fixed.
The projects we're scared to do are inconsistent. So every C I will uh say, well, obviously, I can go, there is a box, and the C I P should know as well as to what's how it's gonna be for the comp plan, but that doesn't answer the negative questions.
The other side, which is are there ones that are just kind of.
We know.
Well, not just that, I mean, I think there are, which is there's stuff in the comp plan that is act, that are actually more important than things that are planned, so I have this kind of option that.
And I think that could be possible, and every time we've updated a chapter, we've gone through to see what the task were, and what was done, and there's always something that went up, and I mean, cause it's just we're trying to look at the perfect world in those chapters, and so we're just not gonna get them all done, but you're you're correct, I mean, one of the things when we actually get to C I P is that we can look at the comp plan actions ourselves as well. But I think staff is told to look at that, to make that part of their decision making on what they think what they promote, I mean, I know, like, if you're on one of the committees, like um Rexon Park, we talk about that a lot, like what how are we meeting the park plan, each park has a master plan, they talk about how they're meeting that, how the, so it's, you know, part of it's committee based as well.
Alright, trying to set up schedule, so are people comfortable with this general approach to C I P this year?
I'm fine with it, I mean, we just, just the scheduling things, I'm gonna be chairing the meeting on the twenty first, I mean, is it, given that we have those two subdivisions for action, plus this, plus a speaker.
Good, it's a good meeting, yes.
I'm just, you know, concerned about, we're gonna have enough time to give ear, everything it's due, I just don't know, the wild card is really more the speakers, I mean, the uh the two subdivision actions, I don't know.
Subdivisions. Like, you know.
Are those, we still, we're still on, right, we're gonna have public comment on those, perhaps significant public comment on some of that, and just, I wanna make sure we have enough time.
Could happen before?
We might, yeah, we may not act on one or both, and just given that, plus the speaker, plus this, and there's, are there other work sessions as well, in that day too?
Uh so it's the speaker series, um the, and then action items on the work plan and the report, those are expected, the brick actions, um will of course have those out to you, uh maybe I can't. And then the um uh C I P work session, if we can stick to that during the presentation, during the conversation, I think is where they will be.
If I'm chairing the meeting, I can say it's the twenty first, but we'll see about, we'll see, we'll see how it goes next week, so you know, I'm.
On the option could be to, I mean, the option that we talked about is to hold a special review.
Yeah, it's kind of, I think your voice in that case.
Well, I think the real question is, when would we know for sure about those subdivisions?
Uh certainly a week before we would know, um I I do know that I saw some on D U plan sheets, it's got something by the applicant for one of them. Um and obviously, it still has to be reviewed, uh staff reports, we do this Wednesday internally, so we'll.
And if if the applicant has done their job, I mean, we should strive to hold a, you know, to some to.
Yeah, there's actually a stimulation in the code that speaks to subdivisions having since the days where we do.
So there is certainly a situation. And then I won't be there, so whatever, but um.
They can call in, you know.
I would, but I thought about that, but calling in would be, I could if. I think I would be more, so I'd be like, I wanna be. Uh but anytime there's items on the agenda that will have lots of, or if it's a bit of lots of public, um I always think it's like to try to make sure there's expertise, that that's better, so I assume that those would happen before the C I P session.
Yeah, we could do it that way, uh I think as Curtis would be calling, there's a lot of the speaker series to first, and we have ones.
We can reschedule the speaker series.
Well, I was my other comment, the speaker series during C I P season. But I'm sure this person is.
Yeah, we don't, and we don't, I mean, I'm sure they're, yeah, I'm sure the presentation will be very interesting, but we don't wanna, you know, sort of cut it short necessarily, I don't know, can we move it to another meeting that is less on it, in the next month or two?
Yeah, it it did take a couple of months to get this scheduled, uh I can certainly reach out to her and ask about her flexibility on on timing, the um one thing I could do is see where are those staff reports, and where are the applications for the subdivisions, which if those aren't gonna be up forward, then suddenly the agenda is pretty bad.
Yeah, so and so I would say, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do the speaker series, and you're gonna have the subdivisions somehow, just to, with the agenda, I don't know, we'll find out when these meetings stay, we'll come back on that, but make sure they know, like, show them at seven thirty, and if you wanna come, I mean, you're welcome to, and answer their questions, and you laugh, and all that, and.
Yeah, it's just.
I I always just feel bad when people are sitting there, like, why am I sitting there this seven o'clock or something?
Well, and also for the secrets, yeah, and for the person who's, you know, if the person's gonna take their time to come out and talk to us, we don't want them to feel like we're not kind of rushing through it, and saying, alright, thanks, you know, we have other things we gotta move on to, so I don't know, I mean, it's
Yeah.
I don't know what, work with that person scheduled, right, if they're open to it, why not make terrible ideas? Otherwise.
But but so we need the C I P schedule works, right?
Yeah, oh, one item uh that was passed out at the day, so this is a sort of a surprise item on the agenda, but I I don't wanna miss the opportunity to talk about this, cause we're still in advanced mode. Uh survey results are in, uh staff received four responses, which is unharmed before we received last year.
I actually filled one out and then I lost it, and I didn't feel like filling it out again.
I did it. I sent it.
Uh let's see, in general. Uh the marks are a little bit down from where we were last year, uh.
Okay, higher, oh no.
So that like.
Because last year I had very high marks, I didn't fill it out, so. Solidly agreed to mark it straight down the line. He went back to where he was.
There were.
I could be a bunch of ones, cause I can't, I mean, sorry, it's neither agree nor disagree, cause I can't comment in the first half of the year, so don't take that as.
That probably. If we take those as an entity, then it's right, then we're right where we were.
Right, exactly, yes.
Um but there were some ideas uh from the comments about um how the group could maybe take a different approach. Um let's see, there was a nice comment about federal organizations since twenty thirteen, uh but moving to a more formal format, uh during public hearings, uh this is generally a group that's pretty uh conversational, uh but certainly during public hearings, when it is a prescribed process.
That's that's pressure. Well, that's because I'd like to feel more informed.
Uh the the second one, uh I thought was pretty interesting, and this was thinking about sort of when staff was writing presentations, for whom are those presentations being being who are those presentations being, I suppose, just to whom are those presentations being given, um that not only is the planning permission being informed, but also the general public. Uh I think we've been a little bit sharp uh with our staff reports, I think we've been tapping on the line where you're not really doing things on, or maybe that's a wrong approach.
I'm a fan of the way it's being done, but sort of biased.
Well, I mean, it's, they're making a recommendation to us, but you're also informing the public, I mean, the report serves as kind of staff's professional opinion on, you know, summarizing what's being done here, so it does sort of do it verbatim, which it kind of does. Um you say you're being, you're saying you're being sharp when you're doing it.
I think we might uh, we may have been sort of clipping out some of the extra storylines, so so we, yeah, so sort of been helping with the staff reports, you know, pretty tightly to, here's the, here's the action, here's the recommendation, here's the background, yeah.
Well, and I, and I have in the past tried to ask questions, sometimes that I know the answer to, because I feel like it will cause you to feel like after, I don't know, maybe not, which I think is a decent way to address that.
Yeah, now you bring it up, I do feel like that's happened a lot this year, on our side, we're like, great, cause we've been through this twice, but but there is, that is a good point, that sometimes we aren't actually explaining it as well as we should for a public meeting. Just because we all know about it, doesn't mean that we shouldn't do more detail.
I think it's also important.
Yeah, like, we're not getting slides sometimes where we used to get slides for almost everything.
Right, and I think sometimes it's also important, this is, I think, is important distinctions that, maybe sometimes I think the staff relies too much on the applicant to give their presentation, and and obviously, you know, everyone has their role, but they're not the same, I mean, the applicant gives us, gives a report, or gives gives their presentation, but staff's report, obviously, should be, should and is different. And I think there are times where, you know, staff speaks very quickly, and then the first to the applicant, but I don't know if it should always be that way, I think the app, I think the staff has a responsibility to again, I guess, advise us on their recommendation, uh but also point out, and 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 you do this in the report typically, but you know, anywhere where the applicant has, you know, and you've been deficient in any way. Um and so I think it's important for you to point out, when you feel the applicant is not yet meeting, like, require Q under the, under the code, and anything else that staff's recommending, and you do that typically, but I think it's important not to gloss over that, and just throw it to the applicant and say, okay, it's their show, it's not their show, it's our show, they're here to ask us for something, you know, and so we need to just always keep that in mind. And I think it's also for, important when the public watches it, that they understand that, you know, the applicant's here um in front of us, and that it's not their show.
Can I just add um a a comment that I made that's that's not here, but that aligns with that comment, is that there've been two meetings, including the Columbia Baptist Church um spire discussion, where there's been a discussion of a hardship, whether or not the applicant was facing a hardship, but there was no discussion of what the hardship was, so this is more supporting Mr. Krasner's comments than directly the staff report, but but I just want to underline that, to the extent that it's it's our show, uh not relying on what the applicant says, I'd like to know when somebody's claiming a hardship, why that it's our hardship. Maybe one of the subdivisions too, there was something about a hardship, I just wanna understand, like, if we're talking about a hardship, what is it?
Maybe that gets at, and you guys do this too, but I mean, you always making trick, you know, tying back to what's the underlying part of city code that is either, you know, that that we should be evaluating against, and you guys typically do that, but.
That is, yeah, that is something we've stepped up in the last uh eighteen months or so, is that in the staff report, you'll see almost, uh and I think it's um I mean, what's the requested action, what's staff recommendations, what's the application, what is the applicant trying to achieve on the on the area, and then the very next section is what is the code section in those references, one thing we've talked about, uh internally down at, and it's also early not only to the city code, but also to uh reference the doubt, that's out there, Albemarle County, um there's a, what's called a, a major, uh major law handbook here, uh and it goes into not only um what is this action, why does it exist, but also what's the court history of the.
Yeah, see, I I think it'd be helpful, cause I, you know, I can read the code, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not an, I'm not an attorney, and I haven't seen how it's been played out, so I, there are definitely times where it's like, okay, I see what the code says, but like, how's that been interpreted?
I always get very nervous when people quote the code, because what the code quotes and what it actually means is very difficult.
Yeah, so I, some sort of interpretation, whether it's something that someone else has written or some history, or even our city internal issues, you know, how far times will it get at?
And and staff's sort of plain language explanation to us, okay, this is the code, and there's the analysis of it, here's where.
Yeah.
But uh.
Yeah, so.
Uh I I, my only comment, which I've been since, is I think the packets are great, I still, there are times when you get a pack with a bunch of attachments, and I'm like, I think it's the same as happens this whole last time. So I need to read them again, so I think it's better, but there's still some, sometimes when it'd be cool if, I don't know how you notate it, I understand why they're there, it makes that package complete, but there's some way to indicate, like, this, these attachments are unchanged from the last time.
Maybe that in the staff report, certainly, that, I mean, that is one thing we did in response, uh was we included that section about what's changed since the last time we saw this item, uh we can certainly do that with attachments.
Yeah, and even like in this packet, I don't know if it was an error, it was on purpose, but like we, we was twice, like, if that's on purpose, that's cool, but I'm like, it's different, I mean.
Yeah, can't choose between, yeah. It was in, it was on purpose, cause one was in reference to how did you write your election, one was in reference to who won or not.
Yeah, I thought so. Yeah, but it wasn't, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure that they're the same, so I spend some time, I think it's in the same, so minimizing that, cause it's a lot of content to go through, I try to take in as much as I can, but when I find myself, I, this seems so familiar, similarly, like, when we get emails in the packet, like, printing them out at the day, this is also, also, I don't know how to do it, but when I come to a meeting at seven thirty, and I got a stack of emails, and I was like, you know, I'm not gonna read them, how, when would I read them?
What's what's the cutoff?
What's the point, what's the point of that, or are we at least replying to them, say like?
We historically haven't had a cutoff, so what um what I tried to do at one point was to, uh all the correspondence, so this is going back to, so for a while, when correspondence went out to the staff base, and since that was distributed through those operations, we were just like, oh. Uh and then I said, well, that's a nice, it was just sort of getting dating and it was inbox, and so I was uh sort of uh damning those off, and but then we ran into a situation where correspondence was coming out, and you guys had to be aware of it before there was something to to pack it, or there was some driven cutaways, or.
Well, and we've been good at getting our packet out a week early, so it's a bigger gap in time between.
Right. Where staff might accumulate.
Yeah, so I don't know if you could have like a sec, like even, I can't guarantee it, but if I could, if I get noon, like at noon today, and we didn't have it today, but if at noon, if they have our meeting, I mean, you guys send out a few emails that didn't make it in the package, but you're gonna print out for the desk, I might have some chance of reading them, but when I literally get to the meeting and they're here, I always feel bad, cause I'm like, I'll flip there, I'll flip there real quick, eh, okay, which is fine, but so then the question is, when we get that, is there a way to reply, I mean, I'm, it's one thing about staff stuff, but like, when the public is emailing, especially when they come to the meeting, or didn't hear you email, like, no, I just got you, you've been looking at me, so I have that ready, is there a way to reply and say, hey, this has missed the cutoff, so they won't be able to read this before the meeting, so either come to the meeting and say it, or just like a.
Yeah, we can say, it's just, it's like, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's happy, it's just, you know, it sounds like what you're saying is, there's some frustration that links with the uh resident, that's what we didn't expect.
Yeah, or or I just feel bad, someone took the time to comment, and we're gonna vote on something, I'm not gonna have that chance to look at it, which is ultimately the fault of the commenter not getting it sooner, but I don't know that people always know what the timing is there.
Well, they're also responding to the package, and they get it in the same.
But is there timing, is there timing based on the council, do they have a cutoff?
Well, in the, in council meetings, the the clerk will, the clerk will summarize all the the comments, read them out during the meeting, which I guess you guys won't do that, you know.
Well, but uh.
I don't know if we want that, but, but you know what I'm saying, like, that's, I guess what I'm saying is, people are giving us comment.
Well, it goes in the record, I mean, we should have a time, but I think, I guess, is it normally to close the business, you guys take everything up until close the business, or I mean, you're getting stuff at like six thirty and still closing?
Yes.
I mean, maybe close the business is 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 somewhat, I mean, it's still, you know, someone has to know, if they send something at four thirty P M, that, we're not gonna have time to read it, but but.
I have no problem with a meeting, I I just wanna make sure that when someone send, I I would love for people to know ahead of time, this is generally the cutoff, but at a minimum, I want people to know, if I just send an email in, I get a response that says, hey, thanks for sending this in, we'll share it, but they're not gonna get it before the meeting, so that I can really vote on it.
I mean, I I don't know, I think close the business is reasonable, I mean, the person has to know that, you know, you have much time, but I think if people are sending stuff in right before the meeting starts, I mean, that seems kind of like.
Right, but I I guess what, close the business, but I guess what I'm saying is, my point is, if I get it on the deck, then, if I get it at the meeting, I'm not gonna read it.
Well, that's.
Whenever they send it, close the business or.
It's one of those things, I mean, sometimes you have time to glance at it, I mean, I think someone has to know, if we're getting handed it that night, we may or may not, and I mean, that that's.
Right, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, right now, if someone emails you the day after the pack is closed, we usually get that on the desk, that's what we do.
I have seen people do a cutoff for written comments, and then, you know, obviously, the personal comments is one of those topics, you know.
Yeah, but that that's what I'm wondering, is the current process, which has been overall great, is we get the packet a week before, and then we don't get anything else until we and some of the stuff like this, we can just read it during the meeting and talk about it, it's sort of, that's totally fine, but when it's a stack of emails, that maybe you can, like, something you can't, I just, I think either we need to tell people, hey, the pack has already gone out, or it's been on the desk, or, you know, it's not. Or we can say, by the Thursday before, and then we get a pack link, packet supplement, which we may or may not read, that's also fine too, but I just.
So if there were a packet supplement, would you want that close the business Thursday, cause at least then you've got, I don't know, Friday lunch hour to read it?
Well, yeah, that that's what I could say, I have to get it at least the night before, because I really have come to most meetings and not been able to see my personal email all day.
I'm completely flexible with that period is, I just think we should have.
It's like Wednesday or Thursday would be good, but, and also, you know, part of the problem with that stack, cause I tried to look through it, one thing about it, when you're a chair, you won't have that luxury, I tried to look through it while Russ is like doing business, and. And I, and there was repetition, because there were weird chains in there where the same email was in there, and so some of it's.
Yeah. Why? That was a reason.
That. I don't know, but at at least in that pile, there was a lot of repetition, and I've seen that before in those piles, and I think it's because you're trying to print something out, and there's like a chain of stuff, and trying not to miss anything.
Longer term, there, I mean, there is actually software that is used, or in Fairfax, that is really great for public boards and commissions, something called Diligent, which allows you to send out the package electronically, and then up, and then update it, and then everyone gets updated almost in real time, like, do a certain cutoff, and everyone gets a notice. Oh, by the way, there are updates. So you get your package a week out, and then, you know, the day before, there'd be an update, you'd get noticed, and it's all, it could be done almost in real time, like, as you're getting stuff in. Um, that might be a longer term thing, because you gotta buy the software and, whatever, buy the licenses and stuff, but there are software that can facilitate that kind of stuff, we can, but maybe at the advanced, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I do, I guess, whatever, it would be cool to me, because I I agree, what happens is, the packet gets posted, and, and, you know, people are in the know, look at that, and spark some comments, and I send it in an email, and I think as long, I think if we had a thing where we said, hey, if, you get this email in by close of business Wednesday, for example, and you send out an updated correspondence packet on Thursday, and, and it's, I'm sure it's in real time for you, and you're like, you know, on Monday, then if you send it after this deadline, they'll get it on the, D A S, and they may or may not look at it, just have that documented, and then then we can tell people when they come up. Yeah, so then, you know, I agree, I would've sent it on Friday, and, you know, which is late, but if you sent it on Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, we can. We put it in the header of the agenda.
Just, just a plug for the good citizens of Falls Church, who also work, because they might not have a chance to look at some of this stuff until the weekend, right, so like.
Right, but I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, I think it's reasonable for us to say, and.
Communicate to them what the limits are.
We just do it, like, as long as it's clear what the limits are, and people can always come and take their three minutes.
Yeah, I think we, we. Well, I think we need to accept written comment, like, if the, you know, it's part of the record of the case, I mean, we need to accept that people have a right to comment and write it, you know, up until, I mean, I think close of business, the day of the hearing is kind of reasonable, you know, and submitting it after like, five P M. Their city office hours are closed for a hearing that night, and that's tough, I guess I don't become a person to hand it in, but it's hard for staff, I mean, I don't know, you know, they can't expect someone to be there between, you know, business hours and the start of the hearing, and maybe you guys aren't around, so you do it, but, um, it's, you know, that to me seems like reasonable now, and someone has to know, if they submit something after four fifty nine P M on Monday, you may not have a lot of opportunity to look at it, but it'll go down in the record of the case, and.
Yeah, totally. So I'm hearing two things, and I think I, uh, I don't know that Thursday versus Friday matters for you all, but that may matter for the, um, residents, it gives them another day to view it during the week, so what I'm inclined to suggest is, uh, comments received before four P M on Thursday, go out in an updated correspondence package probably Friday morning, uh, and then, uh, comments received up until four P M Monday.
And in the reality, it's very few of the things we look at are considered, I mean, if you are in the know, you wanna be involved, you almost always have.
It it also, this says to them that they can send in comments on Monday, but they have to be aware that at that point, they're probably better off coming and speaking, because we will not have had time, perhaps, to read them.
If it's really short, that's a big fault, maybe.
No, I mean, I would, I, like, I think it's true, it's like, the only time I looked at those emails was when Russ was like, agenda, this, that, and the other, and once we were done with that, I didn't have time anymore. Because then you're not paying attention to the people who are presently there.
Right, so the last bullet was, to the extent possible, staff reports and materials we posted sooner, and that more of a roundtable style, than you would put this. The, the long table was a disaster, uh, so I I tried to coordinate several work sessions down there, and the table is so long and so narrow that you immediately lost permission. You'd have, yeah, you'd have three conversations going, and and staff was helpless to to get the feedback we needed.
So so this is recommended by a person who hasn't had that experience, but I like this format, small room, closer in, so I mean, more meetings in this room, I think would be nice.
Yes.
This is just really difficult, because for the public, it's better to be in the other room, but then.
It's also difficult to see councils.
The council's here, and we can't just.
Uh.
Well, that, that, I, I, I remember thinking about this when we were at temporary quarters, where people actually said, I mean, it was within the first month, because they actually liked being in the school board group. Whereas once you're at the D A S, you're doing one of these times.
The heat was bad, and I heard trucks behind me, and I, the windows were terrible, so we were, but yes, we were close. It was a good time.
I wrote the idea going several times, but you could see each other in our.
I think we do try to be informal in work sessions, I mean, despite if we're up in the D A S, like, like now, we're chatting, we're without, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are some good check. Uh, I I think some, not all work sessions are the same, right? So these are literally just kind of, you know, maybe it makes sense to go, you know, since it was kind of, but, I mean, some work sessions, it's, it's hard to make attention, so to, make it the whole chambers, we're going to do it, I always just, I just, I loved it when I finally decided just to stay up till Monday, so it's like, I have something going there, and that was also back in the, back in January, so I think. But for these kind of sessions, it's nice.
Well, we'll always probably have updates.
Yeah, it was that. Yeah, uh, and I think, I mean, I think, since this comment about posting materials sooner, I mean, like, this, this pasture's been way better than, like, having that hard cutoff like one. It's been pretty good, I think if you can do it sooner, though, it would be.
Do it sooner, uh, uh, do it sooner, I think what's not rigged up to run sooner is often the rest of the work session. Uh, as it is, we're generally, applicants expect sort of turn around time, uh, run into a few glitches where we're trying to do joint session at the council, because there's still on this information, Thursday before the meeting, tomorrow, Monday, and so we got to check the package out three, four days before that.
One week has been good, I mean, I think, I know I pushed for that, I, you know, I think, and it's, to me, it's been a big difference, very helpful, I mean, I don't know how much better you guys can do, I don't wanna push too hard, I think a week has been good.
That's what I, that's my feeling.
At some point, at some point, you're, you're, right, you're too far ahead of the schedule, you know, and so you can't, you know, I mean, I I've, I've liked the one week, uh, it's worked.
Right. Well, and honestly, for me, I feel like sometimes there, because of my schedules, I'll review it sooner, I think, but a lot of times, like, wait, because I know I have time, and I'll remember it better, and I, if I looked at it, it's, it's way better.
Uh, my only thought was if there are some big needy topics that happen to get done sooner, and then you move on to the next big needy thing, is there a way you could sort of release the thing that's done already, you know?
Well, that's, that was one thought I had, was, I mean, I, it's a little risky that you could, like, send out some stuff now, and then the other stuff.
So you never know, like, what's, what's the final baggage?
Right, that gets the bad things, so that.
Yeah, it's hard, I know, practice is really hard.
Uh, usually if something's ready early, we just move it up.
Yeah, because that means, yeah, that's true. But I had thought about that, like, if you had some big things that take a long time to look at, that you know isn't gonna change, could you let that out early, like, you got it? Something in the packet that goes out, and I guess back to the original question, was this, is this different from what they were seven, seven days ago, is this the same thing?
We've only been doing this for about, over a year now, like, one week, two years?
Yeah, yeah, we've been doing it reliably for about a year, and we've been starting it, uh, since.
Yeah, so it seems to be generally, uh, it's a huge improvement, you don't, you you don't remember what it used to be, this is already a huge improvement over what it was, I mean, it was ridiculous before.
Oh, yeah, lots of Friday, yeah.
We were getting stuff like, at three P M, like, it was crazy, so it's way better, trust us.
It could be worse. I mean, it used to be, like, make all the papers to pass.
Right.
On Friday, and then on Monday, you'd get.
Or you get a notice that they, it wasn't coming, because there was a delay, and it wasn't coming on Friday, right, you might get it on Monday, or not, or, yeah.
Alright, speaking of the corporate world, I gotta go to work, uh, what else?
Oh, last thing, I'll just send this around, this is a contact information sheet, this is, uh, because we do need to get a mail in to you, or either email or physical, or, uh, if we need to call you during the business day. Uh, so you get around, uh, take a look, if you're wrong, please update it, and we'll get our, uh, we'll get our files.
Were we gonna talk about, um, boarding commissions?
I may have known that, because I forgot to include it in the package, uh, so.
Sounds like a great thing to talk about, but I'm not here.
Okay. Well, what do you wanna be on? How many do, should we put you on? We'll put you on four or five.
I don't know, does this change something?
No change.
Is there a portion of your?
Uh, I never know, because we're in a work session, we're adjourned.